Would some sort have to make their choice?
All right, everybody.
I asked Charlie where that 15 came from.
You're ready?
I'm sorry.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this town board, Reinbeck Town Board meeting of this evening, December 14th. Would everybody please stand for the pledge?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, and just as for all.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion for the approval of our prior minutes for November 23rd, 2015, regular town board meeting. May I have a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Does anybody have any announcements? This is our last town board meeting for the year, so we will look forward to seeing you all in 2016. Town hall will be closed the day after Christmas on the 26th. Anybody else? Public hearings. We have a couple of public hearings that we are opening tonight. We have the Vandenberg Cove Sewer District 2016 budget, the Reincliffe Fire Department 2016 contract, and the Hillside Fire Department 2016 contract. Let's go to tab nine, and we can look at the Vandenberg Cove Sewer District budget first and take any public comments. We discussed this at our last meeting, and the county water and wastewater authority and Bridget Barclay was here at our last meeting to give input on this, which they did. They recommended that we add money for repairs to both the treatment center and the collection center. We've added an additional $11,400 for manhole covers at the county's request. We've added money to fix, put stairs in at the north and south collections, to put a monitoring system in, and several other things that we've talked about at previous meetings. We've also upped the sled removal from 3,000 to 4,500. Lab testing, we raised $3,500. And we have put in $250 for municipal, for the town. The plants are insured under our general liability insurance with NYMAR. We called NYMAR, and they estimated the coverage at about $250 a year. We've put in $2,400 for mowing the areas. It's about 21 or 22 mowings a year. And we've put in $625 for an estimated 25 hours of administration time, and that's done by our deputy clerk. Does anybody have any questions about the budget or any comments? Bruce, did you put your eye on it, or does it look pretty solid to you?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any comment from the public on the budget? I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing on the Vandenberg Cove Sewer District.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2016 Vandenberg Cove Sewer District budget. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thank you. I'll ask you to turn to tab 10 for the Reincliffe Fire Department contract. I'd like to make a, see, does anybody in the public have any comment or questions? I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. May I have a second?
Second.
I'd like to, all in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Is this the same amount as last year?
It is the same amount of last year. They asked us for an additional $1,100. They sent it to us after we approved the budget, and we did not approve it because we had passed our budget already. It's the same amount that we budgeted before.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'd like to ask you to turn to tab 11 for our Hillside Fire Department 2016 contract. I'd like to make a motion, is there any comment or questions from the public or anyone on the town board? I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing for the Hillside Fire Department 2016. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. So moved. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Hillside Fire Department 2016 contract. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Is it the same?
It is the same. It is the same amount. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thank you very much. These budgets are passed. Do we have any committee or liaison reports? Okay, so I will ask you to turn to tab one, and I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2015-269 to approve our preliminary abstracts, vouchers 1280 through 1363, 67 checks totaling May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'll ask you to turn to tab two, and I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 2015-270, our capital projects abstracts, 12 checks totaling $261,051.65. May I have a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'll make a motion for resolution 2015-271 for our budget transfers and amendments. It's on tab three. May I have a, here, may I have a second? Warren. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Warren's here right on time. I come to our fourth item here. Perfect, Warren. I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2015-272, authorizing the town attorney to execute a tolling agreement with Red Wing Properties Incorporated. May I have a second? Warren is here to talk about this. Warren, before you start, I did have an email from a member of the public wanting to know why this is the first time that it's on the agenda.
Because this is the first time we've come to terms with the Red Wing's attorneys concerning a tolling agreement.
This is something that we discussed in attorney-client meeting, and Warren's going to explain why we're doing the tolling agreement and what it entails. Thank you.
So basically, when we adopted the local law to amend the mining law, we were concerned with the possibility of one or more major lawsuits in which the Red Wing and other mining companies might sue the town to claim that there has been a violation of their vested rights to a non-conforming use. And we were concerned about the cost of such litigation and the possibility of damages. And so we reworked the agreement in a way that encouraged the mining owners to, instead of first filing such a lawsuit, to exhaust their administrative remedies by applying to the zoning board of appeals for determination as to whether, in fact, they did have a valid non-conforming use. The law recognizes that certain mines may be able to establish, that they were established lawfully prior to the adoption of the zoning law, which may allow them to do expansion of their mines outside of the new limits of the mine. The town didn't deny that, but wanted the forum for such a determination to be within the zoning board of appeals, and if they were unsuccessful, they could possibly challenge the zoning board of appeals decision. We felt that that was a must, more sensible approach to such litigation, much more cost-effective to the town. And much to our surprise and happiness, the Red Wing's attorneys agreed with us that they were willing to exhaust their administrative remedies by, even though they have saber rattled and said that they could sue the town for a violation of their vested non-conforming rights, they were willing to go to the zoning board of appeals and to appeal any determination by the zoning enforcement officer that they could not mine outside the limits of the revised mining area. But in order to do that, they wanted to enter into what we call a tolling agreement, which is not an uncommon agreement between litigants or municipalities and litigants, in which we agree that if they do do that, the period of time that they are exhausting their administrative remedies would not count against any applicable statute of limitations for filing a lawsuit against the town. We're not waiving the statute of limitations. If it's there, we could assert it as a defense. The only thing we're saying is that during that period of time that you appealed this to the zoning board of appeals, that would not count against whatever statute of limitations for whatever action you might want to bring against the town. And we had to rework the agreement, and that was done through attorneys. That's why it was not done publicly. And we came to an acceptable agreement, acceptable to me and acceptable to Red Wing. And we just need a resolution authorizing the town to enter into that tolling agreement. I think it's in the best interest certainly of the town, it's in the best interest of the mine owners, and it's in the best interest of the neighboring property owners that we enter into the agreement. So I would recommend that we do pass the resolution, the town board pass the resolution.
Thank you. Does anybody from the board have any questions or comments? Do we have any questions or comments from anybody, any members of the public?
I'd like to know what the statute of limitations is on.
Well, it depends on what they bring, and I'm not, we're not conceding that they can bring any action or what the statute of limitations might bring. They haven't identified how they would bring an action, whether it would be a declaratory judgment action or an Article 78 action. The statute of limitations for an Article 78 action is four months, unless it's shortened by, and there are some statutes which shorten that period of time. The statute of limitations for a declaratory judgment action would be six years. The statute of limitations for an action for damages would be three years. So I have not engaged in any dialogue with the Red Wing to figure out whether they have a viable cause of action and what form that cause of action would take. The only thing that we're saying is that if you do have a viable cause of action, the time that you are exhausting your remedies before the zoning board of appeals would not be counted against you. So I don't presume to know what's in their minds. They've rattled, you know, sabers and claimed that they have a cause of action, and they have, not Red Wing, but other mining operators have sued municipalities in damages suits. But the thing that we noticed about other municipalities that dealt with this, they did not emphasize and have a provision in their laws with regard to the requirement of exhaustion of administrative remedies. And we thought that that would be a viable defense to any action that was brought, and that's why we rewrote the law to emphasize that we're not taking away that right and that we acknowledge that it might exist. How it may be sorted out by the zoning board of appeals or by a court appealing a zoning board of appeals decision, I can't, I wouldn't know because I don't know what the evidence would be in support of it. But it's much better for the town in terms of economics for the case to be handled in that matter. So that's why we're agreeing to the tolling, like suggesting we agree to the tolling.
And the local law that we passed was really to encourage people challenging the local law to exhaust the administrative process, so this is a support of that. This is what we wanted to happen. We don't believe, we do not decide whether or not there's a grandfathered non-conforming use. That's up to the zoning board of appeals, and that's part of the administrative process. So we're encouraging applicants who would challenge it to go the route that we feel is the right way, the right thing to do, as opposed to a lawsuit.
Warren, am I correct in believing that Red Wing can, in effect, terminate this if there is no decision by the zoning board of appeals by October 30, 2016?
Yeah, we have agreed to that.
They can extend it if they wish. We would hope that they would extend it, but technically, they can get out of this by that date. And, you know, who knows? There may be a decision by the zoning board of appeals by then. If not, the Red Wing may see fit to extend this.
Right. I mean, the onus would be on Red Wing to expeditiously apply for that. If they fail to do that, I would consider that to be, you know, a breach of good faith and a breach of the agreement. I anticipate that they will apply for it, and the zoning board of appeals has a statutorily mandated time period in which they can, which they have to make a decision and hold a hearing. I don't know how long the hearing may be or what kind of evidence they may present. We haven't gotten into that. That is, it's not within the town board's province. That's the zoning board of appeals to determine how they'll treat the application. I do know, though, that we, when we passed the zoning law, I was reminded that we did, there is a provision in state law which would allow the town to extend the time period for completing a decision before the ZBA. It's 60 days after the public hearing is closed. We have put a provision on our zoning law which does not permit the CBA to do that, so the ZBA would be under the requirement that they, you know, that they would have to finish this. That's why I'm optimistic it would be completed within that time period.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved.
Hey, I'm gonna send mine out.
Yeah. Do you mind staying for?
Sure.
Resolution 2015-273, hiring an auditor for certain town departments. I'll make a motion. May I have a second? We, this is for the town board to hire Lori Doty, a certified public accountant, to do an audit of all of our cash receipts. Previously, the town board did it personally. I think we've come to the agreement, maybe you've changed your mind, that it's best to have someone doing the auditing other than ourselves. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. May, I'll make a motion for resolution 2015-274 to hire an assistant basketball coach for the recreation program. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for resolution 2015-275, recreation fitness class and adult soccer program. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? One question that I had is that there was something going around about an 80/20 split for the town and the instructors. Do you have any information about that?
That's what the fees are. The participants to the fitness class pay $10 a class, and the instructor gets $8.
Right. In the past, I understood that the split used to be 30/70 or 35/65. Bruce, do you have any recollection or any knowledge of this, or?
It was different with each thing.
Moving forward, it's something that I'd like to look at, you know, when we look at whether or not our, this is my opinion, recreation is self-funding, and is a 20 percent, is it covering our rec director and our costs for accounting?
Well, this is, these programs are being held, at least one is at the schools, it doesn't cost us anything, and the instructors get paid out of the fees that the students provide, so it's basically found money.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Just, I assume that insurance has been checked.
What do you mean, insurance has been checked?
Well, soccer is a little more, there's more damage and more injuries with soccer and normally, and in the past, we've had some issues with that, so it was always kept separate from the town.
Well, it's interesting because I believe the reason why we're funding this is because the soccer league does not have insurance for adults. They only have coverage for the kids, and adults were coaching the kids. I have not checked our insurance policy. Have you checked it, or do you know if Alice has?
I'll ask Alice.
Should we?
Well, you ought to ask the insurance agent rather than Alice.
No, we're asking Alice to check with the insurance agent.
Somebody ought to check with the insurance agent.
That's what we're talking about, somebody checking with the, I have not done it. Do we want to approve this?
Why don't we, since we are?
It starts before our next meeting.
Why don't we amend this to say it's approved pending a satisfactory resolution to the question of that insurance?
I'm fine with that. Make a motion to approve the resolution?
Yeah, so I make a motion to amend this resolution to include a provision that says, subject to a satisfactory resolution of the insurance question on adult soccer.
I'll second that. All in favor? Aye. Now, we have the recreation fitness and adult soccer program. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thank you. John, will you make sure that Alice follows up on that? Resolution, I'll make a motion for resolution 2015-276, transferring monies from the fund balance to capital account. The Thompson-Mazzarella Park development. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? Alan, do you want to?
Can I have a counting that shows where that number came from?
I got some. This is what.
I think the only person that doesn't have it is Elaine. The public wants a copy. I have, basically.
I got a job.
But I don't have one yet. I was giving you an advantage, Reid.
Okay, just basically, we allocated $1,502,000 earlier this year to pay for phase one of the Thompson-Mazzarella Park construction. The first part of this spreadsheet shows where all that money came from. It was a $250,000 bond, the parkland account had $260,000, and so on. There are two, there are two things to talk about. One is Frost Foundation gave us $100,000, or has committed $100,000. We've spent, and it was for trails and trail-related expenses, we've spent $76,000 of that, so that's included here. The Stone Church accounted $1,000, and we got $75,000 from the Thomas Thompson Foundation, which leaves $172,000 to be allocated out of the town. The rest of this spreadsheet shows what we spent so far and shows that we spent all but around $55,000 of the original $1,502.
So that 55 is the, from our contingency?
Right, exactly. The remaining, and then the rest of this really is a check on those numbers, the remaining bills. We've got, we estimate that we still have to pay $272,000, some of which got allocated tonight, by the way. And if you look at the available funds, account balances are all there, and they all reconcile to be back $55,000. The remaining cost number at the bottom is, might be a little off, but basically, that shows, that reconciles to the $55,000 again.
Okay.
So that's, so this resolution basically is to?
Transfer the money into the Reinsen Capital Funds Project?
Right.
The H62? Is there any other discussion or questions?
Is that a question? On Westin and Sampson, they've received other money, haven't they, with respect to designing the park, that their total has been more than the $31,000?
Yeah, it's been summed down here, $25,000 right there.
Didn't they get more than that?
$31 was only during construction.
Right, but they got a lot more money.
Oh, they're engineering.
Right, how much was all of that, just so I have an idea of what the?
It was probably close to $100,000.
Oh, okay.
Including this $31 or in addition?
I think in addition.
Probably this is in addition.
In addition, I would think so.
And the, this $25,000 basically was a resolution that we got.
And that $25,000 is part of that $100?
Yes, it is.
So the 25 is part of the 100, and the 10 that we're giving them because we have money left over in the contingency is on top of?
Part of that $25,000.
Right. And 15.
And then from Frost, we expect to get the $24,000?
Another $24,000.
Yes.
Yeah, yes, exactly.
So there was an advance, what is the number from that?
We got two payments from them. The third payment, actually, they thought they had given it to us, a surprise.
Well, the first two were $33,000.
Each.
Yeah. So that's 66, not 76.
Yeah, the 76 has to do with monies that have been spent on the trails. That, when we get the 30, the final payment, part of that is towards that 76. $76,000 has been spent.
The expenditure is nothing.
On trail amenities.
Okay.
We haven't received all of that money.
And Thompson is all paid up?
Thompson is all paid up.
The rest of the Frost money will go to trails or to the?
Trails.
Or park?
It's all committed to trails.
Whole thing is trails.
Wait, okay, so could it be applied to the pavilion bathroom thing or not?
Yeah. It's separately rest again.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
Any opposed? And Joe's abstaining?
This is because of the ethics board.
So moved. Okay.
There's one other item, not associated with your class, but having to do with the trail work.
Oh, right. We are soliciting bids for clearing of trails starting at the road, I guess, or going down into the property. And that's what the $20,000 is under the remaining bills. And we have, we have one bid of $20,000, and we need two more.
Rochelle's working on it. She emailed me today. She has identified two, three other vendors.
That's right.
Right, so what I would like to do is get approval for the town, for you, the supervisor, to sign a contract with the low bidder as we get it, because if we wait till the first of the year.
It's too late.
It's too late.
Do you want to?
The weather may break at any moment. So what I want to do is move that we approve an expenditure of $20,000 or expenditure not to exceed $20,000, subject to the three or more bids we'll get for this work, for the work of the?
To allow me to sign the contract?
Allow the town supervisor to sign the contract.
I'll second it. Is there any discussion about that?
Yeah, what is this whitening of the trails?
It's basically clearing the land between, as it goes down the stone wall, and establishing a trail with stonedust or?
It's actually building the trail. It will be six feet wide and eight inches deep.
Are they six feet wide?
Yes.
Or six?
Six.
Six.
And?
Does it follow the existing, there is existing trail?
No, there's no trail there where we're putting.
Oh, so this would be a whole new trail?
Right. It's part of the design of the trail network that was part of the?
Master plan.
Master plan that was submitted to the planning board for approval, was approved by the planning board.
And?
It's a portion of the entire trail network.
The existing trails? The existing trails, though, would be kept also?
Absolutely.
Yes.
John, do you have a hand, you have a res- you-
I'm left to talk.
Okay.
I'll, I'll write it down.
Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
I'm going to abstain again.
So moved. Is there any, I guess that was new business. Is there any further, any other new business? We have a couple of discussion items. We have the, I received a letter from Heath Tortorella, our mayor, on the 20th of November, asking us to participate in a grant, partner in a project for the Hudson River Estuary Grant, to obtain, to do a study on the local adaptation plan for the village's water treatment plant. Has everybody had a chance to read this? Heath, did you want, want to speak about it? Did you come here for this, or just came?
Not particularly, but if you have any questions-
Okay. Does this obligate us to any funding, or?
No, it was more, we were requesting a letter of support to, to go with the application. It was thought that that would strengthen our chances as another municipality that, you know, has consumers of the system. So it's basically to protect the water plant from potential flooding with the rise of the river.
And this is in our LWRP and our historic hamlet overlay, isn't it? So we would have to, even though it's a municipal property, it would still have to adhere to all planning board regulations, any, any work?
We're basically talking about, right now, some of the pumping, and electrical infrastructure is underground, and it's the closest little hot building to the, to the river. So we're looking at either putting some kind of barrier around that, or, you know, having it like moved up out of the ground. So it shouldn't be, have any impact on the, no, no real change in the program.
Okay, basically, the village is asking for a letter and support. Any, Warren, do you have any, you're here, do you have any input, or?
Oh, yeah, a question. This doesn't say letter of support, this is as a, as a, as a, an applicant partner. So what does that mean?
I don't know, we're, we're asking for a letter of support.
But that's not what's-
Okay.
Because a lot of these grants have matching fund requirements. So I'd like to see the grant application, and know what we're applying for, and what, what the ramifications are for the town. I have no objection, as the attorney to the town, to a letter of support, but if we're going to be a co-applicant on a grant, most of these grants come with matching fund requirements, and sometimes they're quite substantial, as I'm sure Sally knows. So at least, I would like to see the application that's being put in, so that we know what we're signing on to. And I have no objection to it if it's, it's as innocuous as you said, but without seeing that, I can't advise the town board on it, the first I've heard of it.
I believe the application went in today at 2:00, that's why we sent it a couple weeks ago. We're just looking for a letter of support, essentially.
A letter of support, I have no problem with, as long as we're not co-applicant.
Yeah, no, there's no, you don't have to sign the application, like I said, I believe it's, it's already been submitted, and we're, we're past the deadline now. So it, it probably is relatively early.
Great, is everybody-
It doesn't matter with grants, if letters of support many times go in and the grant is submitted.
Fantastic.
Yeah, that's, that's not a problem.
Everyone here-
But you'll send the grant application-
Yeah, so we can just see it, yeah.
-if you can look at it.
Sure.
All right, I will write a letter of support and forward it to the board members and you.
Thank you.
Sure.
And Warren will give us his deal.
Highway consolidation grant from the county, another discussion item. It says, who put this on the agenda?
I put it on the agenda, but I'm looking forward to hearing from Bruce as to what this is all about, and hearing from Heath, as to what the village is going to do with us with respect to this grant. I guess I've never really focused on it, I don't know if any of us have focused on it. I've read it now, and certainly does require, as we know with the grants from the county, a lot of work and commitments and paperwork. So maybe Bruce can take us through what he envisions with respect to this.
Okay. This basically is a study of the tasks, the equipment, expenses, and cultural things such as unions that the town and village employ for the highway departments, maintenance, and cemetery. So that, that group of, say, 15 people, 15 to 16 people. All the work that they do, what do they do, how much does it cost, how much time do they spend doing what they do? That type of thing, and then-
Does that, that includes the village?
Yeah.
What they do in their-
Yeah, it's both, both ways, both municipalities. And, and then, once you have that information, then you say, okay, if, if we were going to redesign this, how would we do it so it's most efficient? And that's, in a nutshell, what this grant is. It follows what Red Hook did last year, this year they're implementing it, last year they, they did the study. The, the price in here of the $45,000 was the quote I got from the consultant that Red Hook used. There's other consultants. A few months ago, I gave you one page with the 12-month calendar of what had to be done each month. And basically, right now, there's a couple things the county's looking for, but I can take care of those, they're no big deal. They're right in the grant, they just want to reformat it, basically. But you, you need to appoint a joint committee of a few people from, that are going to work together, to go and find a consultant. And you start there, and then you could, at the same time, you can start collecting the information of all the tasks, and the costs and equipment. And we have most of that, I think, already. On the town side, I believe the, the village has it as well. So I don't think the data part of it is going to be a huge thing. And it's going to be a range of stuff, because, you know, if you have a snowy winter, you're going to spend more time doing stuff than you, than you would if, if snow removal, than you would if it's a nice, warm, middle Atlantic.
April and December kind of thing?
Yeah, yeah, like that. So that, that's it, and what other questions do you have, John?
Well, I think I understand the $45,000 assuming that we're, you know, use the same expert that Red Hook had. But there is also additional sums of money, fringe benefits, $29,000, salary and wages, 45, I don't know if that's the same 45.
No, what that is, is, that was the, the matching part of our staff. I estimated how much it would cost the town and the village to, to support this. So that's, that's-
Okay, so that's just internal staff, an estimate of internal staff time?
The county wants to know how we've contributed to, what our contribu- contribution to this grant is, and we do it in terms of labor or volunteer time, and that's the number we came up with.
There's money for donuts in there when we have a meeting.
And coffee, just donuts?
Just donuts.
Now, how is, is that really, you know, and Elizabeth has said recently to me that county is really requiring detail for grants. Do we have to set up an accounting?
Shelley does that, we, we account for everything with the grants.
So we have to have a separate item for this? Now, what if we don't spend, and, and I assume this is combined with the village, that at least in theory, we've committed to spend $45,000 of internal labor and fringe benefits of $29,000? What if we don't do it, is there any sanction?
No.
Well-
No, 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 because, because what they're asking for is the, the accounting of the $45,000 that we've asked them for. The, the way this grant works, the internal swag is, is not there. Plus, they're saying, plus or minus 10% with the grant, this grant.
And then we have an item of $5,000 for supplies.
Yeah, donuts.
Okay, donuts.
Sure.
I attended a couple of meetings of the Red Hook group that was studying. I didn't read the final, I have not read the final report, is it?
It's on the county Consolidated Services website.
Question, is it worthwhile, does it, what do they recommend? They studied a town and-
Two villages.
Two villages.
Well-
I don't know, if, if you're familiar enough with it, tell us what they concluded.
Well, I, I don't think the conclusions are necessarily the same.
No, they're not, they're clearly not, we're different, but, you know,
we have 57 miles or something, and the village has 10, and, and so that, you know, you're going to look at productivity and everything, it's going to be different than, than what Red Hook does.
Heath, have, has the village done any, we've done nothing on this so far, to be frank. Has the village done anything, have you appointed people, have you?
We have not, I believe the, the town is the lead agency, the lead applicant on the application, and we've been kind of waiting, waiting for you guys to, to take the lead on it. We have our, you know, we have the data available, anything that we need in inventory, it's pretty, pretty up to date, I believe.
Who would you appoint, Keith? A council, a trustee, and maybe a maintenance, someone from your department?
Probably be Howie, since he's a liaison to the highway department.
Well, that's why I'm here.
Thank you, Howie.
I'm here to ask the town board to allow Bruce to continue working on this project, as he wrote the grant, as he knows about the grant, so, if Bruce is willing to do so.
Maybe Kathy said she's retiring.
That's a great time.
But doesn't that's when they contradict the word retiring?
No, no, you're retiring, you're a volunteer.
Volunteering, yeah.
Well, I would also urge that we try to get some concerned citizens with maybe some accounting experience. You can get some volunteers from the public, as well as, obviously, your highway superintendent should be involved in our highway superintendent.
There is no highway superintendent, they have a DPW head and a foreman.
Whatever the title is, your person who is most acclaimed with-
I think that, I think this board has to-
Can I try to finish you a bit?
Before you just say who should be on the board, this board has to decide how we'd like to put a board together. We're just spitballing here, I think we need a formal, a formal plan, and that can only be formalized by all of us.
Fine, but if you would let me try to finish my sentence, please. That, my own view is that we should try to get, as well as the appropriate highway and village person involved, maybe some people from the public who have skills, and maybe we can ask for volunteers-
Well, that would be part of the committee.
As well.
They, they could be on the committee.
Yes, clearly, yes, go on, just a second.
The, the thing, the number two in here in the task is, "Join town and village public workshop to interview and appoint citizen participants."
Yes.
So that's, was the approach. There's, there's, you want taxpayers, and not necessarily people who have invested interest in the way things are today.
Yes, I, I certainly agree with that.
We want buy-in from the public on this.
So, would it make sense to have Bruce and Howie get this thing organized and start doing this?
Well, I think that each of us should go out to see if we can drum up some interest in members of the public who we think have some skills to do it, and then we see what kind of applications we get.
Okay, excuse me, Kathy.
Son, you want people to-
Yes, please.
Hi, just a couple of questions and a couple of comments, sort of little jumping in. I think, you know, to get these types of grants, to study these things, is always a good thing. I've always figured and saying that, that we need to, people make assumptions without the information. This is the opportunity to actually get the information, so I think that's really good. It is a reimbursement grant, though, as far as I understand that. So, to some of the earlier questions and comments that went up, you have that as an income stream now in your budget, you need to set up a corresponding expense line. If you don't spend the money out, you're not getting it. But it is reimbursement, you have to expend this money first in order to get it. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, because some people, sometimes they hear, without understanding the background information, just think $45,000 just fell into the lap of the town. That did not happen, and that will not happen. Somebody had asked about a couple of other towns, you mentioned Red Hook as one of them. As far as I know, within New York State, there may be more, but I know of four similar types of towns that included highway and DPW-type functions in looking at consolidation studies. That was Town of Red Hook Village Red Hook, Village Tively. Town and Village of New Paltz was the second one. A third one was Town and Village of Lake George. And the fourth one is escaping me, which town and village that was, but they were out there. Two of them were some time ago, Red Hook was recently, just in the last year. The, I think, because there's not that many of them happening, some of the information that's coming out, it's still, and, and it's not really clear. I don't think you can say what one set of results is going to be similar, or any kind of indicator of another set of results. The thing that I do know in common in all four of these cases, though, was that it, the end result said that there were enough differences among the municipalities and departments, that, quote, consolidation didn't make sense. But of course, sharing of certain resources and sharing of certain skills and things does make sense. So that would be interesting, but I think, I just, again, I want to sort of curb people's expectation of what might come out of this. $45,000 is actually not a lot of money for a grant of this type, so I don't know how in-depth this will be able to go. The other thing regarding recommending who would be on any sort of a task force, yes, I think you do want to look at citizens, and you want buy-in, and you do want somebody outside to be able to give that insight, as opposed to people who are already inside. And they have preconceived idea of what the result should be. That's why you have to have some outside people. At the same time that you say that, and that's why it's committees, more than one person, because you have to balance that, I really urge you to also make sure that you have people that are involved that do understand the tasks. The tasks that the, you know, DPW-type departments within the village does, such as water, have nothing in common with anything that the town does. The town highway department and the village street department have some similarities in terms of maybe winter operations, but are very different, very, very different in terms of our summer operations. Someone there needs to understand that, and again, somebody without any sort of preconceived conclusions. So I think somebody needs to understand what the tasks are that departments do, what equipment is required for those tasks, what kind of labor skill set is needed for various tasks, and what the kind of labor hours would be to accomplish those things. So I, I do urge you to give really thoughtful consideration to the establishment of a committee. It's my understanding, and I'm sorry, I'm only gleaning this from the conversation, that this does, Bruce, is that correct, that, that is a requirement of the grant, is that a committee is established? Is that correct?
It's not, it's the proposal. The proposal was that a citizen committee be appointed.
Okay, all right. So I just, for what it's worth, I wanted to add my comments as outgoing, and I do think that the incoming highways of the town absolutely should be a part of it, but again- absolutely should be a part of it, but again, I don't know if that's part of the citizens committee, or the citizens committee is in addition to that. That's for you guys to figure out how you wanna consider, but certainly, the highway superintendent would need to be a part of that. And I actually think probably a foreman would need to be from the town's point of view, because that's the person who's going to truly understand the best allocation of the day-to-day resources, you know, for the, for the actual task objectives. So, thank you for that consideration. Yes, Bruce, you have a question?
I, I think that's why the consultant is so important, because the consultant is going to separate the people who have the vested interest from the people who don't know anything, they just know what they think the end game should be. And, and so, so it's a referee. That, that's really what the, part of what the consultant does, and then the other part of it is trying to find the middle ground between the, the different bodies. But in the past, when we've looked at things three or four times in the, in the time that I've lived here, it's always come down to, oh, we're not interested, and, and so we spent a lot of time and, and nothing happened. And I, I think now that the both municipalities realize, maybe there's a better way of doing this. And I, I think the tone now is, we're, we're willing to at least look. And, and, and so I, you know, I question the consultants, what their, what their value is, I don't know at this point. But I think it's really a referee.
So, just going one step further on that, just to ask, so basically, from that, I would think maybe that the committee should not be appointed until after the consultant is in place, so that the consultant can set some of the parameters up for the committee of the personality types, or the, what you're looking for. Is that, do you agree with that, or did I hear that wrong? What are your, what are your thoughts, Bruce?
Well, the, the idea was that the committee would have been appointed already, would have been interviewing, you know, finding consultants interviewing based on the direction of the two boards, and recommending who was hired.
Yeah, I, I just think.
So, the committee.
I don't think we need the consulting to tell us who our committee should be.
Yeah, but, but you need, I think you need to have someplace to send potential committee members. I mean, if I have, if I have, I know somebody that would be good on this, I don't wanna tell them.
You should tell them that we have a grant to do something. This is what it's gonna study. Are you willing to spend time and dig into these issues? You will have an expert for help, but I don't know.
He, maybe it's a she, Joe.
What?
I said he, maybe it's a she.
Or the he or her.
So, what I suggest is that we appoint some people to get started, and have them interview potential committee members in addition to themselves, and then bring the list to the boards and let us approve it.
Bruce, is this something you're willing to continue on?
Yeah, I guess.
Is that a yes or no?
It depends. See, the thing is, this is a drop dead October. If, if we're not done by the end of September with this thing, it's done. That, the clock started ticking on October first. So, there were certain steps in there where we should have been meeting with the boards, we should have appointed people, we should have, we're, we're a third of the way through already, and I, I think we can probably recover, because we have a lot of information, but. We're not off to good start, let me put it that way.
Why don't we make a, go ahead, so, hold on, Joe, hold on.
I'm thinking you could establish a steering committee to guide you to the point where you can select a consultant, and then grow the committee afterwards, when you have a lot more information.
That's what I was going to propose.
That's why it was written.
Tonight, let's appoint a steering committee. I, you know, would nominate Barry Sherrod and Bruce and Howie Trout, and maybe the three of you could try and bring some more people to the committee. Sally, you wanna be on it? You're here.
Oh.
With all due respect, I don't think Sally has expertise in how to.
Sally has an expertise in anything.
Sally wants to talk.
Yes, she does. Someone can do anything.
Her expertise is raising money.
She's got more than that.
Bruce, is that, is that October a?
Hold on, I, I just made a motion here. Do I have a, do I have a second? Is there, is there any discussion? Can we, can we hold it? We, we have a motion here and a second to appoint Bruce, and Bruce Washburn and Barry Sherrod and Howie Trout as the start of our committee, as a steering committee, to identify more members and start looking for consultants. Is there any further discussion, or is there anyone else you'd like to add from the village?
Not at this moment.
Yeah, my request would be to schedule a meeting that we could send people that might be interested in working with you too, so that there's some target that says, they're meeting on Thursday, or whatever, whatever, at seven o'clock, go to the meeting and you'll find out.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any post? So, moved.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is that October deadline a real deadline, or could it be extended? Because at least my impression was that Red Hook thing took a lot more than a year's time.
They, they restructured events this year, they have a very tight schedule, and they awarded, then, I think it was the end of September, they awarded stuff, and it starts ticking in October. We have to, we haven't gone on to contract yet, because they're looking for, the forms re-formatted and resubmitted.
That's the whole thing with the county grants, every time you submit, they want it, there's a new list. It's, it's unbelievable.
It's crazy, but, but it's, it's not insurmountable. And then, but then it says, come October first, you're done.
They've given, they've given extensions, they've been pretty generous with that.
Yeah, I would ask Warren to really look at that carefully.
Yeah, I have a lot of questions.
We may, we may not be done, and I don't wanna be accused of taking forty-five thousand dollars from the county.
You can't.
You don't, you don't, let me, let me explain to you.
Let me, we submit, we spend the money and get reimbursed. So, I think the first thing that this county has, this, this committee has to do is consult with Warren to come up with an IMA and a contract. We need a contract with the county and an IMA between the two municipalities, and that's really the first order of business.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't recommend getting involved with any more agreements with the county, with the, the village, unless we have signed IMAs, we've been down this road before. And you have to understand, if you don't, if you don't produce the deliverables, the town is at risk for this money, okay? And I'm, I'm not gonna advise you to do that unless we, we have an agreement with the village, signed by the village. So, I'd like to see the grant award, which I haven't seen yet, and the proposed contract from the county, to see what type of timeframe we're on, and what the county requires in terms of deliverables. And then we, there's a lot of preliminary work that has to be done before you start getting into the, into the substance of this, of this study, which hasn't been done yet.
Right, but what I'm worried about is that it seems like October of two thousand sixteen.
I'm never gonna do it by October.
Is a very, very ambitious.
We will, we will ask for an extension, we've received extensions in the past, and, you know.
Well, what I'm suggesting is maybe the initial contract ought to say something, because if they don't grant you the extension, I don't know what the consequences are if you don't have a deliverable.
I think somebody needs to be speaking with Owen Rafter at the county about this and the expectation, because they think that he is the person, as the administrator of these, who can give probably the best indication of what the realistic parameters are.
Let's get Warren the information and have Warren.
If you get me that, I'll contact Owen. I've been through this before, but we're, if you're telling me we're late in the process, and we don't have, we don't have a contract, and we don't have an IMA with the village, there's nothing in there about an IMA. And the village, how do we share the forty-five thousand dollars? I mean, who's, you know, the village has to be part, a partner in this.
Well, I think that goes to hire the consultant, and we may find out that we can't get a consultant for forty-five thousand dollars.
We have to put it out to bid, you have to do an RFP.
I think Bruce has already spoken to the people who did the Red Hook thing. I guess they would be logical people, because they have experience, but I don't know what, whether we do have to put it out.
You have to, the county's not gonna allow it unless you follow their procedures for hiring the consultants, and they probably require an RFP, and, and they have certain requirements. That's all in the grant award and the grant contract, which I need to see. So, there's a lot of stuff, if you wanna keep.
It sounds like there's a lot of work to be done, and an unrealistic time period.
Or they may at the very beginning change the date.
Yeah, the date is not inscribed, Stone.
They want a year, they may, if you don't start until January, they may give you January two thousand seventeen.
The, the county's pretty good about extending these things, but if we don't, the, the original date is gonna be in the contract, which we don't have yet, so we can still negotiate the, the date, but we, there's a lot of stuff that has to be done.
And they want the project to be successful, they want, they want the project at the end.
So, so Warren, just to bring you up to speed.
Yeah, that's good.
Back in the spring, we wrote the grant.
Okay.
Both boards reviewed the application, passed the resolution saying they supported it.
Okay.
And it was submitted. And then it went through months of whatever it does down in, in High Street, and then in September, they announced that it was awarded, and we have to, you know, the clock started ticking.
Right.
In October, they announced it.
I think it was September, but, you know, it doesn't matter. But it's, it's a year, and you saw the application, it's got a schedule in it, what has to happen each month, that was the proposal. And if you wanna change that, that's, that's fine, but, you know, the framework is the framework that.
Yeah.
Works. This, this, all this is workflow. This is standard task assessment kind of thing. Companies do this all the time.
And so do municipalities, but you have to enter into a grant, you have to get the award, I have to see the award, which I haven't seen. And we have to do a contract.
John has the award, they sent a letter.
But I don't.
Here, we're gonna get all the information to you, John will get it to you this week, we've, we've.
Not this week, I'm gonna, I mean, soon, but, you know, we're.
We, we've appointed three people to a steering committee, and we're gonna get started, and we'll figure it out.
The other thing is, it's like, they didn't get handed down from the idiot, that it takes twelve months to do this. It could take six months.
They, but they.
It could take three years.
They will, they, the county has been very supportive, and they will extend the deadline if they see that we're working. We've been through this before.
Just listen to this, get, get me the grant award, get me the proposed contract, I'll contact Owen Rafter, and then before I leave, I will give you an idea of what we have to do to get this thing moving from a legal perspective. What you do in terms of internal committees, I have nothing to do with that. But there needs to be an interministerial agreement with the county, with the town and the village. And I'm sure, it's, it's not in this, but it might be in the deliverables that the county wants. I wanna get that done, and I wanna get that signed before we move on from this.
Let me just add, I, I think it's a great idea, and.
It is a great idea, it's a wonderful idea.
You know, maybe the start of thinking about other things of combining with the village.
But forty-five thousand dollars is not a lot of money.
If we find out that we can't do it for the forty-five, we may reconsider.
Did Red Hook, were they successful in, in getting some results for that?
There's, I think there was a certain level of disappointment in, in what actually the end product.
What, what they did get out of it was, they got a guideline for what they needed to do to move ahead, looking at consolidation. There were, maybe, they found that they couldn't, or it wasn't going to work, but they had two or three points that they followed to sort of bring some more similarities between the three municipalities. And my understanding from talking to Sue, and, and, you know, Ed, the mayor in, in Red Hook, is that it was really had to do with the way that they're dealing with accounting, to make their accounting, accounting systems more integrated, so that you can move towards consolidation, they're not consolidation. And I think their grant was maybe treble this.
Yeah, that's my impression, it was a lot more than forty-five thousand. But they've been through it once, so if we use the same consultant, Bruce said that he has spoken at least to that consultant.
Yeah, I mean, you, you do have to put it out for an RFP, but you may wind up with the same consultant after, after that, but.
They did get an implementation grant for this year.
That's the next step.
Right.
That's great. So, let's get started, you know, I have no problem with getting started, just that we're several months into it.
All right, we keep, we're saying the same thing. So, John's going to get the information to your office, and we're gonna start. Is there any further discussion?
I have a copy of this.
There, that's yours. And you'll get an electronic copy. Before we go on to.
Do you need me for anything else?
What?
Do you need me for, I'm gonna go, do you need me?
No. Before we go on to public comment on non-agenda items, it's our last town board meeting of the year, and we're saying goodbye to two.
Wait for that.
Wonderful, beloved, longtime elected officials. We're saying goodbye to.
Save for another.
To Bruce Washburn, who's been with us for eight years. We have a token of our appreciation. I'd like to say a few words, and I don't know if anybody else does. Bruce was elected to the board eight years ago. In my four years working with Bruce, I've found him to be very gentlemanly and very supportive, and a very dedicated volunteer. He's tireless. When Bruce says he'll do something, it's done, he doesn't talk about it much. When he says he's going to show up, he's there. When you call him, he'll give you advice, sometimes it's only two words, but it's always well thought out and, and to the point. You've been a tireless and champion of our, our recreation and all, all of our physical plans here, Bruce. You've put in numerous hours on, on thankless tasks. We're elected as stewards of the town's finances and, and the legislators for the town, but Bruce builds things, Bruce makes pavilions, Bruce does trails, Bruce measures chemical output in closed landfills, he cleans out sewer traps. He, he, he does everything. I, I know that he won't, it's sort of, hopefully you'll get a rest and be able to do more of what you like, because eight years on the board is a lot. I, I wanna say thank you, and I, I hope you know how much I have enjoyed working with you, and personally, I will, I will miss you very much. This is a small. It's a small token of our appreciation here, and this is from, from everyone at the town, and.
I thought it was donuts.
No, you can put donuts in it. It's, it's just a little crystal bowl, and it says Bruce Washburn, Town Board, two thousand eight to two thousand fifteen, and there's a town seal on it, and you can put hard candies in it, or punch or something. This is from all of us to you. I also have just a, a nice certificate for you. I'm just gonna read it. It says, "On behalf of a proud community, the Rhinebeck Town Board extends its sincere gratitude to Bruce Washburn for his commitment, dedication, hard work, wisdom as a town board member from two thousand eight to two thousand fifteen. Glad you're sticking around on at least one project, and I will miss you terribly." This is from me. I feel like I've helped, you know, drive you to drink over the past couple of years, so this isn't a privacy for you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I've really enjoyed it, it's been an honor, I think we've gotten a lot done. There's been some differences along the way, but that's what makes things better, so. I think we have a better Rhinebeck now than we had eight years ago, so, I appreciate it, thank you.
I have a few words. I'm not sure that the public fully understands the role of a town council person. We have a wonderful staff here in Town Hall, and indeed, over the years that I've served, my appreciation of the staff has grown, as I learn more about their generosity, teamwork, and experience. However, the Town Hall staff is fully occupied with everyday staffs. Therefore, new initiatives have to come from town board members. It's not just having ideas, but dedicating the hours necessary to develop and implement new initiatives and projects that the board approves. The residents of Rhinebeck owe a great deal to Bruce, since he has accomplished many things. things, for the benefit of both two-legged and four-legged residents of Reinbeck. Bruce initiated the idea of a dog park on property at Olster and Stone Church Road. He elicited the support of the Red Hook Town Government and Red Hook volunteers. Bruce worked physically constructing that park. During my years on the Town Board, Bruce has worked tirelessly on the often contentious issues relating to Vandenberg Cove and its sewer system. And he was ultimately successful in obtaining financing to replace that sewer system without bankrupting the residents of the Cove. And for those of you who remember those contentious meetings at Vandenberg Cove, Bruce was a saint for dealing with that project. Bruce initiated the idea of privatizing the transfer station, which has already saved the town hundreds of thousands of dollars, and is likely to save millions in the future. He wrote the RFP soliciting bids for the privatization. He negotiated the contract with the operator. That relationship has been a win for the town, since persons who use that facility have bonded with private operator. Bruce physically constructed a pavilion in the town pool, at the town pool. Several years thereafter, he came up with the idea of using that pavilion in wintertime as a homemade ice skating rink. He, together with a helper, physically built the barriers to contain water which froze in the winter, allowing for ice skating. Bruce has devoted himself to the development of the Thompson Nazarela Park. He advocated its construction, worked on the nature trails, and the kiosk, of using his own physical labor as well as others. Bruce was a member of the Town Board, which adopted the Comprehensive Plan and Arizona zoning law. Although I was not on the board during those years, I was present at a number of hearings and followed the process. I believe that the Comprehensive Plan did a diligent job, which the Town Board improved by making various changes in the plan. Bruce was a major contributor to that effort. Over the years, I have differed with Bruce on some issues, and on some of those issues, I've come to realize that Bruce was correct. At all times, it's been a pleasure to work with Bruce. He has a captivating grin and personality, and I hope he'll continue to volunteer his services to the town. We have all been very fortunate to have Bruce with us on the Town Board, and I will miss him.
Thank you.
Well, Bruce, I haven't known you for very long, but I can say that it's been a real pleasure working with you. Your institutional knowledge is phenomenal. I can't thank you enough for all the times you've taken calls for me on the weekends, in the evenings, different times when I've had questions about things that you've known so well. You've really helped educate me, and I really am going to miss you very much. I wish you all the best. I'm very happy you're gonna continue, in some capacity. And I hope you still let me call on you from time to time, when I have questions that will be, I'm gonna hunt you down.
I've been doing that for six years. Thanks.
You're welcome.
I'm gonna miss you, Bruce.
We are, we will miss you. Thank you.
I'll be out there, haunted you.
Oh, that's a promise.
Maybe we will.
We're also saying goodbye today, formally, at our last town board meeting, to our highway superintendent, Kathy Kinsella. Kathy was elected ten years ago. When Kathy was elected, out of the nine hundred some odd highway superintendents in the state, she was one of six women. Kathy smashed the glass ceiling in this state and in this county, as a woman highway superintendent. I think thanks to Kathy, there are three others in the county now. It's, we've become known as the county with women highway superintendents, and it's quite something. It's, that is quite an achievement, Kathy. Kathy runs the department, Kathy runs the department in a highly organized manner, and with a lot of love and a lot of humor. She and Bob Wyant are almost like a comedy act, albeit a devoted one. With Kathy running out at three in the morning to take the temperature of roads right before snow falls, and listening to the two of them go back and forth is, is, it's funny and endearing. But it, it, it doesn't belittle the hard work and the care that they give. I've spent a lot of time with Kathy, driving around Reinbeck, and Kathy will turn off a state or a county road to go an extra seven miles to get where we're going, to drive on town roads. I have learned about culverts from Kathy, about swales, about ledge mowing, about safety procedures, about different processes for skimming. She's a wealth of information, and she has injected at least into me a desire to know more. It's, it's a great department. She has the best interest of her crew, and I think their devotion. It, it's a better department for Kathy and Bob. We're lucky to have her. She's, she's fine tuned in, and, and made a form for everything. So, Barry coming in, you'll have at least a great filing system with procedure in place. Kathy, I am sad to-
Yeah.
-to be a, you've been a friend and a mentor to me in government. You've taught me a lot, and I will miss you on a personal level. But, I am very happy for you and your spouse, for Chris, in this new stage of your life. And I know that, you know, you'll be there when, when we need you for a question, or even a visit. So, on behalf of the Town Board, I have a, a small presentation to make. First of all, we have a little certificate, because everybody likes a certificate, and it says that the Reinbeck Town Board extends its sincere gratitude to Kathy Kinsella, for her ten years of service, hard work, and dedication to Reinbeck, and for lovingly maintaining our roads and infrastructures as our highway superintendent from 2005 to 2015. And I also have a small, we have a small dish for you. I figure that you can bring this with you to Arizona, and again, it's got our town seal, and your name, and your office, with, with the dates. So, thank you, from all of us, Kathy.
Thank you. Thank you. I very much appreciate the gift, but the gift really has been the ability to work for the town. I, you know, we've all said this usually on campaign times, but I do love Reinbeck. I really do love Reinbeck. And it's been, and I've worked, I've worked in state government, you know, the hub of our state up there in Albany, and I've worked in New York City, which likes to think of itself as, you know, the hub of everything. And I've worked at town government in Reinbeck here, which has certainly been the hub of my life, and the hub of my heart. So, it has been a gift to work for everybody in Reinbeck, and I'm better for that opportunity. So, I thank you, everybody. It's been a pleasure to work with everybody, whether we, sometimes people agree, sometimes they don't agree. Everybody in Reinbeck, whether you're a board member, elected in some other capacity, a volunteer or employee, everybody is coming from a real core of ethics, and a core of caring, and a core of wanting to do what's best for the town. They all get the big picture. So, I really appreciated that opportunity. Bruce, I want to say to you, thank you. We certainly have butted heads on a couple of issues, but you have my respect. You are, you know, have put so much in, and I think that it's great how you could shoulder the grindstone, and it comes from a true place, and that's all one can ask for, and I thank you for everything that you've done. And I thank everybody else, and Elizabeth, you know, I was gonna say.
Thanks to open. We have a couple of more pieces of business, but after we adjourn the meeting, I hope people will come down, maybe to the Beekman Arms Inn, Bruce, and have a little toast? I'll motion it, maybe someone will second it. I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session very quickly to discuss one piece of business concerning a union negotiation. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.